Evening, my name is Justin Lardinois and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cell phones. The parking validation machine for the garage under City Hall is located in the rear of the chambers up at the top. Following roll call during summary of hearing procedure, we'll review how the public may provide comment during today's session, but now we will stand and salute the flag. Thank you. Now we will do roll call. Myself, Justin Lardinois, I'm here. Vice Chair O'Nellis Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Barocio.
Here.
Commissioner Bigford.
Here.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio. Not here. Commissioner Rosario.
Here.
Commissioner Tordeos.
Here.
And Commissioner Young.
Here.
Okay. Summary of hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit a completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. Procedure for this hearing is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and/or appellantants may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. For members of the public who attend by teleconference, the meeting technician will connect those persons who desire to speak to the commission so they may be heard. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or appellant may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers and response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed and the planning commission will take action on the item. The planning commission may request staff to respond to public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The planning commission's actions on pre-zonings, or excuse me, on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides procedures for legal protests at the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The planning commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and all staff reports of this meeting may be accessed at the commission's website. So before we begin, I want to remind the planning commission members and members of the public to follow our code of conduct in meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in a conversation with the commissioners or staff. All members of the planning commission, staff, and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the code of conduct which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting may result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the planning commission will now come to order. So now we're going to go into the general public comment period. This is where we can take public comment on non-agendized items. And let's see. So for members of the public who attend in person, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the technician. For members of the public who join by teleconference, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your phone to raise a hand to speak. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to the public comment, the planning commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, or directing staff to report back on the matter at a subsequent meeting, or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. Do we have any speakers for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda? Either in person or on Zoom? Okay. If not, we'll move on to deferrals and removals from the calendar. Do we have any items to defer today?
No.
Okay. We do not. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. So there will be no separate discussion of individual consent calendar items as they're considered to be routine and will be adopted by one motion. However, if a member of the commission requests debate, separate vote, or recusal on a particular item, that item may be removed from the consent calendar by the chair and considered separately. The public may comment on the entire consent calendar and any items removed from the consent calendar by the chair. Staff will provide an update on the consent calendar. If you wish to speak on one of these items individually, please come to the podium at this time. For members of the public who join by teleconference and wish to speak on one of these items individually, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your phone to raise a hand to speak. And to clarify, on the consent calendar tonight, we have the item A, which is the minutes from the August 9th meeting, item B, which is CP 23-011, and ER 23-074, which is conditional use permit for late night use for a drinking establishment at 177 and 189 West Santa Clara Street. Item C, which is PDA 16-027-03, and ER 23-124, which is a planned development permit amendment and determination of public convenience for off sale of alcohol at a extra mile on 657 Horning Street. And then item D, which is PDC 22-099, PD 22-030, and ER 22-166, which is a planned development zoning for, yeah, to put it simply, an expansion on the Bellarmine campus at 960 West Heading Street. Now, I understand that Commissioner Rosario has a conflict of interest on item D, so we'll pull that from the consent calendar to vote on separately. Does anyone want to pull any other items? Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
For clarification, did you say item B or D?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Bigford. Item D, Commissioner Rosario has a conflict on it. Commissioner Casey?
I think I have a conflict as well for the Bellarmine.
Okay. And also note that Commissioner Oliverio is now with us. Okay. So we will pull item D to consider separately. Does anyone want to pull any other item? Or it looks like we have a member of the public who wants to speak on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay. We can take public comment now? We'll get the card regardless, but yeah, go ahead to the podium. State your name and then you have two minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Brian. I live at the Access Condominium Building and I'd like to comment on B because of the fact that the proposal is to open a bar, which is going to be at the top floor, which will be within 65 feet of residences. And I wanted to talk about it because on my way over here, I had stopped at a few other hotel bars. And for example, the former Fairmont Hotel, it's Signy, I believe it's called, their bars close at 11:00. Ameria closes at 11:00 p.m. The Westin closes at 10:00 p.m. Four Point closes at 11:00 p.m. Hyatt, their bar closes at 10:00 p.m. on weeknights and 11:00 p.m. on weekends. So I'm not sure why they're asking to have a 2:00 a.m. timeline for a bar at the top of the building next to hotel residences, because that's within 65 feet of our living rooms, bedrooms, living spaces. So I'm thinking that I'd like to ask you to consider 10:00 p.m. or 11:00 p.m., not 2:00 a.m. for every night. Also, what are the noise ordinances? Has there been acoustic studies done on this? For example, including the neighborhood buildings, it's going to reverberate. I can hear bars two blocks down because they are clearly violating noise ordinances. I mean, literally, 11:00 p.m., I have to turn my TV up to hear it and I'm on the upper floors. And this bar now is going to be directly, if you will, across from us at a very high level. And also for that regarding that, what about light pollution and noise pollution for the bars? Since they're going to be, again, 65 feet across from a residence that's all glass. So I'd like you to consider that. I think 2:00 a.m. is a little outrageous. Most bars right now in San Jose close at 10 or 11 p.m. and I wish this one would as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. So we have a consent calendar with items A, B, and C. Item D has already been pulled. Would anyone like to pull any other item or make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
I have a motion to approve the remainder of the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Oliverio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Tordeos. Okay. We'll go to a vote on motion to approve items A, B, and C. Vice Chair O'Nellis Wise?
I was wondering if we could get staff to give us some comment based on the feedback that we got from the public. Can we do that?
Okay. So then we would pull item B?
Yes. Yeah, I think it would be a good idea since we have someone here from the public that has some concerns.
Okay. Commissioner Oliverio?
I will amend my motion to be just items A and C as in Charlie.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to approve items A and C. So we will go to a roll call vote. Vice Chair O'Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself a yes. I believe that's 11 yes, zero no. Okay. We'll go ahead on to item 4B, the conditional use permit for the late night use for the drinking establishment. Is there a staff presentation for this item?
Is there another consent item that you want to vote on first that yet to excuse? Or do you want to go to public hearing?
Fair enough. Thanks, John. Yeah, so let's go ahead and consider item D first. Now, Aaron, I believe the way we would do this is if there's no discussion, Commissioner Rosario doesn't have to leave the room. He just has to not vote. Would you say that's?
That's correct. I believe there are two commissioners who have.
Oh, right. And Commissioner Casey as well. Yeah. And Commissioner Casey, did you submit a conflict of interest form? Okay. If you could do that just after the meeting. Okay, great. So if there's no discussion on item D, we will go ahead with that vote. Commissioner O'Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey's abstaining. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario's abstaining. Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself a yes. I believe that's nine yes, zero no, and two abstentions. So let's go ahead and continue to item 4B and hear the staff presentation if there is one.
Yes, there is. I'll do a brief presentation and then address the member of the public's questions. Good evening, Commissioners. Cameron G., Planning, Project Manager with the Planning Division of PBCE. Item 4B consists of a conditional use permit to allow late night use from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. for a drinking establishment occupying two existing commercial tenant spaces at 177 and 189 West Santa Clara Street. The establishment would operate as a restaurant during the day until 10:00 p.m., at which point it would operate as a drinking establishment for patrons over the age of 21. The site is located in downtown surrounded by an eight-story mixed-use residential building to the north, single-story retail and restaurant uses to the south across West Santa Clara Street, a three-story mixed-use residential building to the east, and a 13-story mixed-use office building to the west across North Almeden Avenue. The project is consistent with the site's general plan land use designation of downtown as it would provide a new commercial use, generate city revenue and jobs, and improve customer convenience due to the site's proximity to other businesses. The project is consistent with the allowed heights, setbacks, parking, and noise requirements of the DC Downtown Primary Commercial Zoning District. The project would not alter or expand the existing commercial building and there are no parking or noise requirements for uses within downtown. The project was reviewed for consistency with two city council policies. Council Policy 6-23 for the evaluation of nightclubs and bars and Council Policy 6-27 for the evaluation of 24-hour uses. The project is consistent with both city council policies as it does not include any outdoor or entertainment uses that would adversely affect the surrounding uses. The police department is neutral to the drinking establishment operating past midnight. As the project only includes interior tenant improvements for the indoor operation of the drinking establishment, it is categorically exempt pursuant to Secret Section 15301A for existing facilities. Staff followed Council Policy 6-30 for public outreach. And then to address the member of the public's questions, so the, as I previously mentioned, the DC Downtown Primary Commercial Zoning District does not have any performance standards for noise requirements. In addition, the project is being conditioned to, after 10:00 p.m., close all windows and doors to mitigate any noise impacts to the surrounding residential areas, as well as having a general manager or owner be on-site during business hours acting as a disturbance coordinator.
Thank you. Is there an applicant or a representative here tonight who'd like to speak? Okay. So the procedure is you would have five minutes to speak and then we'd take any additional public comment and then you'd have another five minutes? Yeah. If you could just state your name.
My name is David Mulvahill and I'm the owner of Flaherty's Irish Pub, Dr. Funks Tiki Bar, and Five Points Cocktail Bar in the same neighborhood. I think if you look at our records, in the past, we don't have any callouts from police disturbances. We were pretty reptile operators. I did notice the gentleman, I thought I heard him say that we were within 60 feet of the access. I think he might have the wrong location because we're definitely not within six. I mean, maybe I heard him wrong, but I thought he might have maybe mixed us up because I thought he said 60 feet within the access building, which I don't think that's possible. So maybe he has a different location in mind. I don't know. We're already, you know, there's already established drinking places there that are probably actually closer to the access than us that are allowed to stay open until 2:00 a.m. So I don't think we're going to be doing something closer to the access that's already existing.
Does that conclude your comment?
Sorry?
Does that conclude your?
Yeah. You guys have any questions?
Yeah. We can ask you questions outside of your time, but if you're done speaking for now, we can move on to public comment and then.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you.
No, no worries. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item aside from the gentleman who already spoke? Okay, if not, if you have anything else to say, you have another five minutes to speak or we can go ahead to the commission. We have to you.
There is one person.
Oh, sorry, there's someone on Zoom. My bad. Let's go ahead. Please state your name. You have two minutes to speak.
With the person on Zoom ending on one eight, please unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Great, thanks. Hi, this is Nate LeBlanc. I'm the Business Development Manager with the San Jose Downtown Association. Just wanted to call in and say that the Downtown Association is supportive of this project. We've worked closely with Mr. Mulvahill and his architect on the submittal. He's been, you know, extremely responsive to the issues raised throughout the process, fully agrees to the conditions that have been presented to us tonight, and has frankly an impeccable record of running good establishments that add to the character of downtown. And so we'd like to just give our full support to this and hope that you are able to pass it tonight and he can move on into the building process phase and get it open sometime next year. We feel like it'll be a great addition to downtown and we hope that you feel the same way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for public comment? No? Okay. All right. So the applicant may speak for up to another five minutes if you have anything else to say. Otherwise, we can move on to the commission. Okay. Great. I don't, I believe it's request? Yeah, the request button can. Okay. Commissioner Young?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank the member of the community who came in. Thank you. We always appreciate you coming in. So I have a question for staff and that is, his concern, I think, is not only with this project, but existing projects that may not be following the requirements of their conditional use permit. What would be his, who on the city staff could he talk to to investigate that concern?
Yeah, so any member of the public can reach out to our Code Enforcement Division and report a violation if there are any noise complaints or other disturbances.
Okay, great. So could I ask maybe a member of the staff to talk to our community member before he leaves? Just to give him that information?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Looks like Commissioner Oliverio next.
Thank you, Chair. I certainly like to speak in favor of this item. Our downtown is, as the council member Torres says, is the entertainment center of the city. And 24-hour uses have been in downtown and in this very address and building since I was in high school. Don't ask me how I know that. With that said, with that said, I certainly appreciate the comments from the member of the public, but it's a matter of same way when you're living next to a school. There's going to be traffic for pickup and drop off. And downtowns tend to be noisier than suburbs. And with that said, I just would simply make a motion to approve this item and further state that our downtown is still struggling and took a punch in the gut from COVID and the pandemic and we're trying to recover it. And every business that adds to the, to the fun factor, entertainment is what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliverio.
So if there's a motion to approve, if anyone would like to second it?
Yeah, and we do have folks who are requesting to speak, but I'll just ask quickly, do we have a second for Commissioner Oliverio's motion?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Tordeos and we'll continue our discussion. Commissioner Bigford?
Thank you very much. I have two clarifications that I'd like because I feel like I heard two different things. I don't live downtown. I'm from Barriessa. So I heard the person, the first person that spoke said 11:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m. was the hours of the businesses in the surrounding area. And I heard the applicant say the other businesses in the direct area are 2:00 a.m. I just would like clarification if staff could comment. And let me just add one more thing so you can do both. I also read that this area, although the police had no specific issue, this was 20% higher than the standard for callouts or activity. And I just want to make sure I understood that that was true because it sounded like everybody thought there was not an issue with police activity in this area. So if you could clarify those two things for me, staff?
Yeah, so staff can do some research into looking at the hours of operations that were approved with conditional use permits for adjacent businesses. I don't have that information offhand right now, but we can certainly look into whether or not those adjacent businesses are operating, you know, in accordance with their approved permits. With regard. With regards to the Police Department memorandum, you are correct in that they are neutral to the, to the 24-hour uses being proposed. Was that your question, your second question?
Yeah, it was also just verification that it was actually above the standard, and they were still okay with it.
Right, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Bickford, I don't want to speak for the member of the public or the applicant, but I believe the member of the public was comparing this to other hotel bars in the area, and the applicant was comparing it to bars in general.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rosario?
Sure, I had a, pardon me, I had a quick question about the noise coming from the bar. Well, actually, two questions. One, is this the old Irish Innovation Center that we're talking about?
Yes, the Irish Innovation Center was on the second floor, and below the Irish Innovation Center was a.
Can we have? Oh, yeah. Could I ask the applicant to come speak in the microphone? Just want to make sure folks on Zoom and the recording can hear you.
It's below the old Irish Innovation Center, and do you remember the stairs that took you up to the Irish Innovation Center? Well, they built an extension onto that building, so we're going to occupy that extension, which is about 3,500 square feet, and 2,500 square feet is the unit beside it, and it's going to be one unit. And we're going to have an open kitchen in there, and a bar, and so that's, that's the plan.
Great. And then the other question I had was, the report says that there's no amplified noise coming from the bar?
There's no what?
Amplified noise coming from the bar?
No. I mean, we're not going to have, when I consider amplified noise, it's DJs, bands. I assume that's what you mean. We will have a speaker system in there like any restaurant or bar that will project, whether it's just background music.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Just to clarify, is amplified sound, is that something that's actually a legally meaningful term in this context?
I think in most cases when we're talking about amplified music, we're talking projection. I mean, every venue has some speakers and just background music, we generally consider that just normal.
Okay.
That's like live events, other things like that where they're going to have amplified speakers or anything. Mainly, predominantly, it's more of a concern outdoors than indoors.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Commissioner Cantrell, I accidentally kicked you off the list, but go ahead and speak.
I'd like to restate what Commissioner Young said here. We welcome public response and opinion. I do appreciate and respect that you came to talk about this issue. As a matter of fact, this is an issue that, I lived before in downtown St. Louis in a high-rise, and there's a bar, and the noise does wash right up the side of the building. It does have an impact, for sure. But I'm certain there's a code enforcement process here, that if it does become a problem, and that's not to say it well, if it does become a problem, there's a process, and I think that process will, I would hope will remedy the situation if it becomes a problem. But I do respect where you're coming from, believe me, I know it personally, and I had to use that process previously myself, so I just wanted to let you know, we're not listening, but we believe that there are remedies in place if it does become a problem. Thank you.
I see no other requests from commissioners to speak, and we do have a motion on the table from Commissioner Oliverio with a second by Commissioner Torrios to approve the staff recommendation for Item 4D. So if there's no further discussion, we'll move on to a roll-call vote. Commissioner, Vice Chair Oleswise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And myself, yes, I believe that's 11 yes, zero no. Okay. All right, we will continue to the public hearing. This is, we have one item on the public hearing for tonight, this item 5A CP 20-021, T 20-016, and ER 20-146, and I don't think I can adequately summarize this in a sentence or two, so I'll just defer to staff for the presentation.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen first.
Sure.
Should I? Oh, sorry. I think I should open this first. Or just pop it up, you know? Just pop up your PowerPoint and make sure it's the top one. And then share it to everyone. I did. All right. So, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Angela Wong, and I'm the Planning Project Manager with the Planning, Building, and Co-Enforcement for Item 5A, file numbers CP 20-020 and T 20-016. So before you this evening is a conditional use permit to allow the demolition of all existing structures on site for mixed-use development on a 1.23-acre site in the West Intensity Map to merge all seven lots to one lot for condominium purposes. So before getting to the details of the project, I would like to provide you some background of the project. So as you can see from the map, the project site is located on the north side of West San Carlos Street between Brooklyn Avenue and Boston Avenue. The site is surrounded by residential use to the north and commercial uses to the west, south, and east across all these three streets. The conditional use permit in the intensity map was submitted in 2020 with the annexation and pre-zoning applications because the project, because the area in blue lines was with, outside of the city limits at that time.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just as a question for audiovisual technician, is there a way for us to view this presentation on our screens?
If you push the number one, it'll take you there.
There we go. Thank you so much. Apologies for the interruption.
No problem, okay. The project EIR annexation and pre-zoning went to the Planning Commission hearing on December 14 last year. Planning Commission recommended City Council to certify the EIR and approve the annexation and pre-zoning. And the City Council certified the EIR, approved the pre-zoning, and approved initiating the annexation on February 28 this year. The ordering annexation was later approved by City Council on March 28. And LAFCO then certified the annexation on June 20 this year, and the area, I mean, in the blue lines officially became part of the city. So now, the hearing tonight is for Planning Commission to consider the associated conditional use permit in the West Intensity Map. The project boundary is the 1.23-acre site within the yellow lines on the area map. So the conditional use permit is to allow the demolition of all existing structures on site for the construction of a mixed-use development. Two of the existing buildings are eligible for listing in the San Jose Historic Resources inventory as candidate city landmark. The demolition of those two buildings would result in significant and unavoidable impact to historic resources. This, the EIR, the EIR was, I mean, I believe it was discussed in the December 14 Planning Commission hearing last year. The mixed-use development consists of 61 multifamily residential units, and 246-bed senior living, senior care facility, and 6,000 square feet of ground-floor retail space. The project also includes an alternative parking design, including parking stackers in the parking garages, and allow commercial condominium units. The West Intensity Map is to merge all the existing seven lots to one lot and subdivide to up to 61 residential condominium units, and five commercial condominium units, and underground parking condominium unit. Let me go to the next slide. So the project site is within the West San Carlos Urban Village Plan area and is designated mixed-use, MUC mixed-use commercial, which supports high-density mixed-use developments. The zoning district is also MUC, mixed-use commercial. So to be consistent with the urban design policies and guidelines in the adopted urban village plan, the project promotes pedestrian activities by widening sidewalks, incorporating a 2,000-square-foot corner plaza, and directing vehicular access to the side streets and the rear of the property. And active space are placed along the plaza and the West San Carlos Street with consistent storefront design. The proposed building respects the residential use to the north. The proposed building has a substantial setback, and setbacks from the northern property line. And there is an eight-foot-high masonry wall along the property line and a five-foot-wide landscape buffer with screening trees. The project is consistent with the 2040 General Plan and the West San Carlos Urban Village Plan. The mixed-use commercial land use designation allows up to 50 units per acre and up to four FAR. So with 61 units on the 1.23-acre site, the project would result in a density of 50 units per acre, and the entire building has FAR of approximately 3.89. The West San Carlos Urban Village Plan land use policy requires a minimum commercial FAR of .5, or at least the same square footage of the existing commercial area, whichever is greater. So the proposed commercial FAR would be 2.44, and the total commercial area of the project significantly exceeds the existing commercial area. The project also conforms with the zoning code and complies with the residential and commercial design guidelines as discussed in the staff report. The EIR was prepared for the annexation, pre-zoning, and the development permits. The EIR was certified by the City Council on February 28 this year, and because the conditional use permit in the intensity map is within the scope of the project analyzed in the EIR, a determination of consistency with the FAR was prepared for the Planning Commission's action for the project. Based on the analysis in the staff report, staff recommend Planning Commission to approve this conditional use permit in intensity map. This concludes the staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, so we'll continue on. It looks like we have someone from the applicant to give a five-minute presentation, and then after that we'll have public comment, and then another five minutes from the applicant or representative. Go ahead and state your name, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Sal Caruso, I'm the project architect. Thank you, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. I promoted you, sorry. I just want to say we 100% consistent with the staff recommendation. This is much-needed housing and retail space and commercial space for senior care, which is part of the project, including the 61 residential units, which are desperately needed in our city. In addition to that, as staff had pointed out, the EIR was certified by the City Council. All the matters of the existing buildings to be demolished were addressed significantly, and all that has been handled already. So what is before you is the architectural project, which is 100% consistent with the West San Carlos specific plan, neighborhood plan. So we're very honored to be a part of it, and hope for your approval, and look forward to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on this item, either here in person or on Zoom? All right, so I'll ask the applicant, okay. All right, so the applicants waived their additional five-minute presentation, so we'll go on to Commissioner discussion. I see Commissioner Cantrell has his hand up. Sorry, I'm still learning how to.
Yeah, I don't think. I think we were simultaneously incorrect in how we press buttons here. I'm curious for the developer, how many, if any, affordable housing units would be available in this circumstance?
We are not certain at this time, based on bank financing, whether they'll be built onsite or an in-lufi will be paid, but I believe the percentage is consistent with the city of San Jose requirements. It would be, I'm trying to remember the exact number, I apologize.
The staff believe it's 15 onsite, 20% offsite, or I forget what the calculation is if you pay the in-lufi.
Pay the in-lufi.
Yeah.
So they're doing, you're doing the in-lufi.
I believe that's what the bank is stating at this time, yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Oleswise?
I wanted to ask staff if you could show me a map. I know it looks like there was an annexation part of this, so I wanted to see what was city, what was still county unincorporated. Do you have a map that shows that?
And I believe we'll need to hit the one button on our tablets to see whatever staff projects. Yes.
Oh, okay. So the zoning map.
Oh, sorry, hold on. If anybody's having trouble seeing it, just hit the button labeled one on your tablet. Yeah.
So the zoning map to the right shows, I mean, the one with colors are within the city right now.
So everything we see in Burgundy, that's all city?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you talking about before or after the annexation that recently happened?
Currently, what it stands.
Okay. So it got annexed recently?
Oh, it was already annexed.
Next, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just want to say that as a former planning planner for Santa Clara County, the Burbank area had so much potential, and we really wanted to see some of this annexed to the city so that we could see great projects like this come in and really revitalize this area. So I think, obviously, the housing need for seniors, as mentioned previously, is great, and I know that there was some historical structures that will be demolished, but I think in this particular case, the need for housing is more important, so I'm definitely in support of the project. So I'd make the motion to go ahead and approve the project.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Vice Chair Oleswise, and a second for Commissioner Oliverio, and before we continue on that, Commissioner Bickford was requesting to speak.
I simply have a question for clarification. I understand what 61 residential condominium units are. I don't understand what five commercial condominium units are. Could somebody just clarify that for me?
Yeah, I have the applicant here. Oh, sorry, I think the microphone turned off right before you got here. There, okay, it's on now.
I'm good, thank you. So the various uses in the project, for example, there's one commercial condominium that is the underground parking area. There's a few commercial condominiums on the ground floor so that, for example, an individual business owner can buy a retail condominium on the ground floor and own their own business space rather than just rent. So it provides the opportunity of ownership if there are those interested in that. You're very welcome.
I don't have any other requests on my list. Do any other commissioners want to speak on this before we go on to a vote? Commissioner Cantrell?
Yeah, so I know that you're certainly within your rights to pay into a fund and move forward on your project, and I can understand the financing makes it difficult sometimes to do affordable housing. I get all of that, but we're talking about one of our most vulnerable communities, seniors in housing at an intersection there. I can understand the financing makes it difficult sometimes to do affordable housing. I, I get all of that. But we're talking about one of our most vulnerable communities, seniors, and housing at an intersection there. I, I know that this is difficult, but I, I really hope that developers like you will find a way to make affordable housing in this area specifically for seniors more likely and possible. Paying into a fund is meeting your obligation, but I think we need to go beyond our obligation, at least our legal obligation, and meet an ethical obligation to help find and create housing for very, very vulnerable seniors as well. That's just me on my soapbox.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you. I, I don't believe the sixty-one residential units are age-restricted. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. If no other commissioners would like to speak, we'll move on to a roll call vote. This is Commissioner Nellis Wise's motion to approve the staff recommendation. So Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that's eleven yes and zero noes. This motion passes. And that concludes the public hearing for tonight. We'll move on to... We'll move on to Section Six on the agenda, which is referrals from City Council, boards, commissions, or other agencies. Do we have any items for that?
Nope. No.
No.
Okay, so we will move on to Section Seven, Good and Welfare. Item A, do we have a report from City Council? Or it sounds like we have many reports.
We have many, many reports. Hang on a second. So the results of August fifteenth, let's see, there was a, well, I don't know if you guys were involved in this, but there's a request for a proposal for a city, for basically tow service, tow service administration. That was approved by council. There was an application to the federal emergency, to FEMA, for grant funds for a staff story retrofit program. And that was approved. And that's it for August fifteenth. Let me go to the next one. August twenty-second, there was amendments to the Urban Village Master Agreements for Consultant Service to extend the term of these master agreements. I think it was for another two years. That was approved. There was a Housing Catalyst Status, Housing Catalyst Teamwork Program Report. That was accept, that was just accepted. That was just a report. There was an annexation on Moore Park. I think this is across the street from Valley Med. That was approved. And that concludes August twenty-second. And there's August twenty-ninth. There was a rezoning planned development permit and a vesting tentative map at forty-one forty-six Mitzi Drive. What was that for? For a...
That was the Graves' House, right?
Yeah. Twelve-town homes, three-story buildings. Okay. That was approved. I don't have the vote, but it just says approved. And that was that. That's it for the twenty-ninth. And then on September twelfth, yesterday, there was a conforming rezoning and site development permit for properties in the five-hundred block of North Fifth Street. And that was approved. That was the removal of two walls, a portion of a roof, a slide door, a portico for construction of, in addition, to a denzel office. And that concludes council report back.
Okay. Move on to Item B, Subcommittee Formation Reports and Outstanding Business. I don't believe we have anything for this.
I don't.
Okay. We'll move on to Item C, Commission Calendar and Study Sessions. Are there any updates to the commission calendar?
I do not have any updates.
And any upcoming study sessions?
I'm not aware of any upcoming study sessions.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to agendize an item at a, I guess, on the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting. I'd like to ask to get an update on the state Housing Community Development Department's review of the Housing Element Second Draft, as well as what staff's doing to address their feedback and what the timeline to approval looks like. Would there be a second for that motion?
Second.
All right. So, motion from myself and second from Commissioner Torrios. Any discussion on this motion? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to ask that this be, if this item is to be agendized, that it be the last item of business on the agenda that evening, so we don't have to have applicants and other staff wait to get through that.
Yeah, that's certainly friendly to me. I'm not even, I mean, Michael, where would something like that go on the agenda anyways?
I know, good question.
Okay, but.
I think we can, we can figure it out.
Yeah, let's, let's, we'll handle it after consent calendar and public hearing.
I think we put it at the end somehow.
What day was that?
Uh, for the September twenty-seventh meeting, that's our next Planning Commission meeting.
I'm probably going to be out of the country. I would love to, to be a part of that meeting. Is it possible maybe to push it back into October?
I would just like it to be timely, because I know this is something that's moving quickly. But that's, that was why I wanted it to be at that meeting.
I can certainly understand and appreciate that. Yeah, oh, wow. Okay.
And the Chair, one further clarification. I heard you say after consent calendar, but I was, I was hoping it'd be.
Oh, sorry, after consent calendar and the public hearing.
And public hearing. Great.
Okay, so just to restate the motion, it's to agendize at the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting, an update on HCD's review of the Housing Element Second Draft, what staff is doing to address feedback from HCD, and the timeline to approval. And that was a motion from myself, a second from Commissioner Torrios. Any further discussion before we go to a roll call vote?
One additional, Chair.
Sure.
Michael, so the items that you are, per the request on the agenda, that is something that is a staff function? Or is there any more additional Planning Commission council function?
In terms of the housing element.
That's correct.
Process, that's, well, we can talk about that on the twenty-seventh. It's not, it's not set in stone yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Barocio?
Perfect, thank you. Would you be able to review the timeline, just, just so we're clear about why it can't be pushed to October? Because it would be nice to have all of us hear that.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I, I'm asking for the twenty-seventh, because I believe that this information might be a lot less useful if we get it, if we wait until October for it.
Less useful to council, to, to us? I just wonder.
So I'm trying not to get into too much detail here, because I don't want to start a discussion on something that's not agendized, but I believe staff is trying to move fairly quickly on the housing element. And so I would like us to be able to get that information and do what we will with it as soon as possible.
But I think part of the concern is, we're always on this fast track, and is there a possibility to slow it down at this point? Just so we can have everyone present?
Yeah. Personally, I, I think it's important to have this on the twenty-seventh. If folks want to amend the motion, welcome to. But that's, that's my intent with making this. Commissioner Oliverio?
I'm amicable to moving it. I, I don't, you know, without talking about it, I, I don't think it's going to be done. So I don't think there's any jeopardy. So, you know, I don't know if anyone else will be out in October, but, you know, so.
We've got Commissioner Torrios.
Yeah, I was just going to speak in favor of trying to keep the twenty-seventh if possible. I think, looking at the calendar, you know, HCD has a sixty-day review timeline. So if we're trying to get a housing element approved by the end of the year, that would mean submission by the end of October. And if we're not even hearing from planning staff until our October session, that just leaves kind of limited time for our feedback to actually be taken into account, which is, I think, what the Chair was trying to get at.
Commissioner Oliverio, will you have your next?
No, we're just talking about it, right? I mean, I think, you know, San Jose is, again, by not talking about it, there's something out there that every city is having a struggle with. So, you know, it is what it is. I don't want to put staff in a position that makes what they're doing more painful, but staff will have to decide what that discussion pertains to. I mean, I know the city attorney's here, so, you know, that's why, this was my question. You know, we took action, the council took action. From what I understood, there's an administrative function now between HCD and professional planning staff. I'm not clear if it's, what, what the status is with, with Michael's response, so. You know, but if we, you know, we, we can certainly agendize things and discuss it. So whatever, it's the will of the commission.
Sure. And I also, I want to recognize, you know, we're not the City Council. We can't tell staff what to do. So this is a request to staff to have this presentation at our next meeting. Commissioner Young, you're next on my request list.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted to weigh in. Number one, I think it's a really important issue for us to get information on. And, you know, with respect, Commissioner Cantrell, somebody's going to probably have a problem with the October eleventh meeting. Me, possibly. So it's, it's kind of one of those things where I hate to set a precedent where we keep moving things for one commissioner, because inevitably, you know, there's eleven of us, unfortunately. So, you know, I, I'd be in favor of keeping it on the original date.
Okay. I don't see any other requests to speak.
I'll, I'll just.
Commissioner Cantrell?
I'll just say, I, I completely agree. My mom wouldn't like me being a roadblock to progress. So I understand that we need to move forward, and this is timely. And we, we need to hear what's happening and respond to it as quickly as possible to give the city time to respond to that. And I, I think that's fair. So I will enjoy the beaches of Barcelona.
Oh, nice.
You enjoy this. Thank you for your, your consideration. I do appreciate it.
And actually, and you just reminded me of something. I just want to be clear on this. So I know my motion is not to include taking an action, so we won't be able to take an action, but we can still give feedback on a presentation.
Well, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, is this working? Yeah. So, I mean, we're just going to give you a status report of it, of what it is. And I'm sure Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong, but individual Planning Commissioners can make comments or give their thoughts. It's not a vote of the whole commission.
Sure. Yeah, and, okay.
However, Michael, sorry, Chair. Michael, but once it's agendized, that's also a public comment opportunity?
Good question. I would think so. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Okay, I don't see any further requests to speak, so just to keep it abbreviated, this will be a motion to request that staff give us a update on the housing element at the September twenty-seventh meeting. So we go to a roll call vote. Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, a yes. I believe that's nine yes and one no.
And the no was?
Oh, sorry. Ten yes.
Ten yes, and the no was?
Was Commissioner Garcia.
Garcia, thank you.
And so that passes. Great. And then finally, we have Item D, the public record. Anything for that?
I have nothing.
Okay. Then at seven twenty-eight PM, we are adjourning this meeting. Good night, everyone.